It moves. Okay. The council has agreed to do some adjusting of the schedule due to one of our speakers' schedule. So, we are going to move, we're going to skip number three for now and come back to it after. We're going to go straight to the public hearings since it is six thirty-five. Madam Clerk, twenty nineteen, two eighteen dash two, Sandy Hollow Road Tree Trimming and Limb Removal, and twenty nineteen, two two two, Neighborhood Assistance Act Proposals Public Hearing.
The Town of Groton Notice of Public Hearing, May seventh, two thousand nineteen, six thirty P.M. Notice hereby given, the Town, Groton Town Council holds public hearings on Tuesday, May seventh, two thousand nineteen, P.M., oop, six thirty P.M. at the Town Hall Annex, Community Room One, one thirty-four Groton Long Point Road, Groton, Connecticut pursuant to State Statute twelve dash six three zero for the twenty nineteen Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act Program applications for the following grants. Fifty-one thousand nine hundred ninety, excuse me, fifty-one thousand ninety-nine dollars and three cents for LED lighting for energy conserv- conservation conversion project for Connecticut, Southeastern Connecticut Television, or better known as C-S-E-C-T. Fifty-eight thousand four hundred and two dollars for LED lighting, Energy Project, the Groton Community Center. One hundred fifty thousand dollars to install a one hundred and seventy-one thousand three hundred HVAC system for Sacred Heart School. Thirty-six thousand dollars to replace windows at the Riverfront Children's Center. One hundred forty-nine thousand five hundred, excuse me, one hundred forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars which Eastern Connecticut Housing Opportunities has applied on behalf of the Mystic River Congregate to install energy-efficient lighting and twelve split-system heat pumps. We'll also have pursuant to Town Code, Section thirteen point five dash one twenty-four, a Sandy Hollow Tree Trim and Limb Removal Project, so that needs a public hearing also this evening. This was dated Groton, Connecticut, thirtieth day of April, twenty nineteen. Brandon, there's a town-wide paper called "The New London Day", and it was on the town website as of the thirtieth.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So, we have four people signed up to speak for the public hearings. The first is Dr. Gail Kingston, followed by Don Bassi. If you could please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the public record. Yes, please. Try again, please.
I'm Dr. Gail Kingston. I'm the principal of Sacred Heart School in Groton.
There we go.
And I also live in Groton, Connecticut. And the project is for an energy-efficient split system throughout the entire building, which would be a hyperheat system. Presently, we have the original boiler and heating systems from nineteen fifty-seven, and as many of you know, it's a pneumatic unit. Each classroom, one classroom make it hot, the next classroom cold, the next classroom has no heating. Boiler continues to break, so we definitely need to install a new Mr. Bichi split system throughout.
Thank you. Mr. Don Bassi, followed by Sue Radway and Kirsten Valentini.
My name is Dominic Bassi. I live at nine five one Eastern Point Road. It should be noted that I'm a member of the Park and Recreation Commission. My wife, Sherry, and I are part of the taxpayer group who play pickleball at the Groton Community Center. We have had two hundred and sixteen different people play there. I have ninety players on my email distribution list whom I contact at least twice per week. That being said, I'm speaking on behalf of our regular ninety and over one thousand-plus multi-generational taxpayers using the community center each week. Our group of picklers bring in between seven and nine hundred dollars per month for the town of Groton. We are self-sustaining. We collect the money, organize play, et cetera. Groton presently is one of the premier pickleball sites in southeastern Connecticut, and we want to make it better and safer. Presently, the vapor lights cast shadows throughout the gymnasium and throughout the building. The Groton Community Center was a terrific idea that has come to fruition, an idea that you have all supported, and we are advocating and lobbying for you to move it to the next level. You can do this by supporting the Recreation Department's application to the Neighborhood Assistance Act for the purpose of converting all the lights to an LED system, which many of our competitors have already done. Fifty-two thousand dollars or thereabouts to convert the entire building is a small-priced bid. We, the town, will recoup the investment within three years. Three years. I mean, that really is a lot of savings. You will have created a future for energy savings, better lighting, creating a safer environment throughout the building and all its activities. Thank you for the time, for allowing me to make you aware of the Neighborhood Assistance Act and a way to save taxpayer money. Please support the Groton Recreation Department's application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bassi. Sue Radway and Kirsten Valentini.
Hello, I'm Sue Radway, I'm the Executive Director of Riverfront Children's Center, and I'd just like to ask you to support our application for the Neighborhood Assistance Act. We're requesting funds to replace eleven windows in the building. If you're familiar with the building at four seventy-six Thame Street, it was originally a nursing home, I believe, that was built in the fifties. And there are eleven windows left that have not been replaced, including those very large glass windows at the bottom floor that I've told are a single pane, very big energy loss. We need to maintain, we are required to maintain for licensing our classrooms at seventy-two degrees. So, these windows, which are window, sorry, wood without storm windows, et cetera, are a challenge in the wind and the cold in the winter for us to maintain the seventy-two degrees. So, we propose that with the replacement of this, not only will we have sealed windows without drafts, but we will be able to reduce our energy costs, which would be helpful. So, again, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Frank Ficini.
Good evening. My name is Frank Ficini. I'm the Executive Director of Southeastern Connecticut Television. We are the nonprofit community access provider with a studio at eighty Plaza Court in the Groton Shopping Plaza. We provide training and support in television production to more than eighty thousand residents in southeastern Connecticut, and we televise the programs on the local channels. Thank you for considering our Neighborhood Assistance Act application for energy-efficient lighting. Through this program, we would like to replace our current studio lighting with energy-efficient LED lighting, to save a considerable amount on our electric bill. Some of the advantages of LED lighting, it uses a lot less power to provide the same amount of illumination. Going from halogen incandescent to LED decreases power requirements from eight thousand eight hundred and fifty watts to one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five watts. That's an eighty percent reduction. LED lights run a lot cooler than studio halogen incandescent lights. In the summer, we have to run a noisy HVAC system to cool the studio when using our current halogen lights. This generates objectional hum in our studio recordings. About ninety percent of the power to an incandescent light goes to generating heat, only ten percent to actual illumination. About the opposite of true for LED lights. Halogen light bulbs have to replace often, their lifespan is in the low hundreds of hours. LED lights last thousands of hours. Our portable lighting kit is over twenty-five years old. The halogen bulbs are extremely hot and dangerous in a portable environment. They draw a lot of current. We have to be careful we don't blow fuses when setting them up. Replacing with LED light kit ensures, replacing with an LED light kit ensures greater safety and no overloaded circuits. LED lights can also be battery-powered, enabling much greater flexibility in field shoots. We appreciate the opportunity to apply for this grant, and please let us know if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here that has not signed up to speak for the public hearing? If you'd come up, please, and state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Julie Savin, and I am the Vice President of the Eastern Connecticut Housing Opportunities. Our office is located at one sixty-five State Street in New London. We were hired by the Mystic Congregate, Mystic River Homes Congregate Building on Elm Street to come up with a master capital improvement plan, and part of that plan is for energy efficiency upgrades. And the Neighborhood Assistance Act application does represent mini-split system for the residents. Currently, everything is a electric heat and window air conditioners, which is very expensive for them. They all pay their own utilities. They're all on fixed income, and this will greatly help them. Backup heat, a mini-split system will provide backup heat to an electric system already in place, and also air conditioning in the warmer months. It is a two-and-a-half-story building, so the higher floors, you can imagine, get quite warm. And so, the one hundred and forty-nine thousand five hundred dollar application for the, through the Neighborhood Assistance Act would be an amazing contribution to the capital plan that we have in place.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for the public hearings? Okay, seeing none. Public hearings are closed. Six forty-six. And at this point, we're going to go to Roman numeral five, which is receipt of citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. This is the portion of the council meeting where the council welcomes comments from citizens. To address the council, please sign the sheet, which I have here. When you are recognized by the mayor, please approach the podium, clearly state your name and address, and speak into the microphone. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Town councilors will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and can respond during the responses to citizens' petitions portion of the meeting. We have first Rick Silver, followed by Irene Weiss. I'm sorry? Certainly, I'm not sure if the mics are on, though, so if someone could check that, please. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Great, thank you.
My name is Rick Silver. I'm Vice President of the Groton Housing Authority Tenant Organization. I'm here because we're having problems with the Groton Housing Authority and the staff, the Executive Director and the Property Manager. We held an election last August, and I was selected to be Tenant Commissioner. I went through the process of being vetted by two people here, a third somewhere. And then, I didn't hear anything, and I called the town clerk, who stated that Jamie had called them saying that there was a special tenants' meeting because someone else was interested in the position. When we found out who it was, the organization voted that we did not want this person as Tenant Commissioner, but he was elected and put in the position. Now, it's time to reelect because his interim term is over, and we're getting problems with the vote. They're saying that we need to petition for an election, which we have in organization. All we need to do is send out a notice to the tenants thirty days before the vote, and then hold the vote, but they're not allowing us to send out the notices. I, in January, went around, we were having a meeting, and the resident service coordinator normally sends out the newsletter, but her father had died, she took ten days off, so there was no way to get the newsletter out in time for the meeting. So, Charlotte and I, the president, and myself, Vice President, printed up and distributed, and I got a letter saying I was in violation of my lease for going around knocking on people's doors and delivering newsletters. And then, I got a newsletter, another violation notice, saying that I had harassed and bullied someone, one of the tenants, and I was in violation of my lease and could be evicted. We're having all kinds of problems. People's rents went up a hundred and a hundred and fifty dollars, some of their rents, and they were complaining to me because they thought I was Tenant Commissioner, and I'm not. And they, we brought this notice stating that we wanted to have a meeting in June and vote, and they told us it's not proper because we list ourselves as the Groton Housing Authority Tenant Organization, and they say we're a resident organization, a resident association, which an association has to pay taxes, has to file tax forms, has to be incorporated. And we keep telling them, we're not an association, we're an organization as stated in the Connecticut statutes. But they keep giving us a hard time about it. And now, we feel that they're just balking so that they can slip Chris back in on a five-year term, and none of us voted for him in the first place, and we don't want him to be our Tenant Commissioner. So, we're asking for your help in this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Silver. Irene Weiss, followed by Liz Raceback.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. And I, I wasn't planning on saying this, but the first thing-
Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Irene Weiss. I live at seventeen Godfrey Street in Mystic, and I'm representing the League of Women Voters tonight, the League of Women Voters of Southeastern Connecticut, which encounters all of New London County, pretty much all of New London County. And some of you have seen us at debates, we hold debates, we time debates, so maybe we look familiar here. Some of you are members, some of our members are in the audience. But the thing I want to say that I wasn't planning to say is just to thank all of you for your service. I don't think people realize how much volunteer time committees, councilors, give to our community, and I think when you get involved a little bit, you start appreciating what a service it really is. So, thank you to all of you, to Bruce Flax, who's here, who's former mayor, and anybody else that has, I see some representatives that have served. It's really a great thing that you do. But what I wanted to talk to you about is this issue of early voting that's in the state legislature right now. The League of Women Voters, as you know, is very concerned about empowering citizens and helping our democracy to be strong. And in order to do that, we want as many people to vote as possible. So, the issue that we're talking about is early voting. And in order to have early voting in Connecticut, and that means more than just the Tuesday that we ordinarily vote on, we need a bit of a change to the Constitution of the state. And some people feel that change to the Constitution is a big deal. I don't want to mess with our Constitution. But I would like to point out that if you are a renter, I don't know if anybody's a renter here, if you are a woman, if you are a person of color, the Constitution has been changed for you to vote several times over the years and for other people to be included. So, this is, and this is really just a tweak, it's not a big deal. People have found that early voting enhances the voting experience, more people vote, and it just makes it a more inclusive kind of experience. Connecticut's only one of fifteen states that don't have some kind of early voting. In order for this piece of legislation to go, be presented to the voters in 2020, and this is what it would look like on the ballot, it would say something like, "Shall the Constitution of the State of Connecticut be amended to provide a minimum of three days of early voting and allow all voters to vote by absentee ballot?" So, the absentee ballot is another part of this issue. If it passes the General Senate, the House and the Senate in Hartford by seventy-five percent of the vote, then it can be included on the 2020 ballot. It already passed the House by eighty-three percent of the vote. This is not a partisan issue, this is a bipartisan issue. We would like to see the Senate, which probably will vote on it tomorrow, also vote at a level of seventy-five percent in favor of presenting this in the 2020 ballot, this change. Let's see. There's a lot of information that I have, I have handouts here that I guess I can leave somewhere for people to look at more about this, and certainly I'd be willing to take questions. I hope that, I'm not sure what vehicle you could use to help us support this issue, but I felt that it was a privilege to be able to talk in public about this and present the information, and I hope that people will support it and call our senator in this area, who is Heather Sommers, and encourage her to vote for it, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz Raceback, followed by Kristen Distante.
Good evening. My name is Liz Raceback. I live at eighty-one Main Street, and I'm here today to talk about plastic bags. I see you have that on the agenda. I am co-chair of the Groton Conservation Advocates, and one of the issues that we are very concerned about is the abundance of plastics in our environment. And one of the exciting things happening in many states and in this state is that towns are passing ordinances, as you know, to ban plastic, single-use plastic bags at the checkout counter. And that last part is very important. It's not all plastic bags everywhere. It's plastic bags that you carry out when you check out your groceries. So, I'll talk a little more about that later. There's a number of exciting things that have happened. New York State has passed a ban on plastic bags, the single-use plastic bags. They're the third state to do so. And just this past week, Maine is the first state to pass a ban on sty- ring, which we commonly call Styrofoam. That's the kind of very lightweight, white, fluffy stuff that Dunkin' Donuts and others sell, put their coffee in, and it is one of the worst polluters of the environment because it never breaks down. And it ends up in Long Island Sound at our oceans, and is killing innumerable numbers of fish and turtles and marine mammals, whales, et cetera, who eat it and are poisoned. So, as you, I'm sure, are aware, I think it's on your agenda, Connecticut has a bill to ban plastic bags. There's a bill that has come out of the Environment Committee. I heard that it is now in the Finance Committee, and it may get changed significantly there. I commend the council for wanting to support that bill. But I caution you that it's important which bill you end up supporting because it's in the process of changing, and there will be more changes in the Senate. And so, finally, coming back to our own draft, local ordinance, I wanted to, which you all have seen, I want to express Groton Conservation Advocates' strong support of our local, that Groton pass a local ordinance. There's no telling whether a state bill will make it through, we don't know. And even so, it has, it has a couple of problems. One of which is that it only applies to restaurants that are ten thousand square feet and larger, which means it wouldn't apply to any of the restaurants in Mystic, basically. It would only apply to extremely large restaurants. So, one other thing I wanted to suggest as you consider a local ordinance is that you consider having a fee on paper bags, a fee of five to ten cents, preferably ten cents. And there are a couple of very good reasons to do this. One is, the fee should go back to the store owner, in our view.
You have one minute.
Okay. It shouldn't be, I'm almost done, collected by the state. It should go to the store owner to defray his additional costs of providing paper bags. And in doing that fee, there's a strong likelihood that we will, that customers will begin to bring in their own bags and will get to the goal we really want, which is to reduce the amount of plastics in the environment and trash in the environment. Last thing is that the Connecticut Food Association, which is a large lobbying group, I believe, for the food industry, has just come out, changed their position in support of a five or a ten-cent fee on paper bags. So, I ask you to consider that in developing your ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristen Distante, followed by Tom Olson.
Good evening. I'm Kristen Distante. I live at eighty-two Irving Street in Mystic. And I'm here tonight representing the Town of Groton Conservation Commission. At the April ninth Town Council meeting, you guys, a resolution was proposed that the Town of Groton would fully support the statewide ban of plastic bags, endorsing the Senate Bill, a proposed Senate Bill one zero zero three, which is called "An Act Concerning the Use of Single-Use Plastic and Paper Bags." The Conservation Commission strongly supports the Senate Bill one thousand three. We encourage the Town Council to pass this resolution. However, we believe that the state resolution is the minimum standard. It's a lower standard than what we would like to see for our shoreline community here in Groton. So, recently, the Conservation Commission did a survey. We assessed public support for this type of initiative, and we found an overwhelming support, going door-to-door to businesses, polling residents, whereas upwards of eighty percent of citizens of Groton that were surveyed were very supportive of this kind of initiative. So, right now, you have a resolution that you're working on, which is called "The Plastic Ban Resolution for the Town of Groton", and we would like you guys to, the Conservation Commission would really encourage you to continue with and pass that resolution. We would, as a Conservation Commission, would like to offer our support to the Town Council and the public if further education is needed, if conversations need to be had, if people have questions, whether you want to have individual meetings, workshops, some kind of public forum, some kind of online website presence. We want to support the staff and the process of educating the public to help promote passage of this important bill. So, let's see, I think we had five possible categories that we thought might be beneficial for further education. One was just the environmental impact of plastics, including impact to water quality, marine life. Secondly, recycling of- Secondly, recycling of, recycling versus reuse, lots of things that we put in the recycle bin, we think they're getting recycled, but they end up just landfillled, so we need to kind of assess that reality. And third, public health, these plastics, microplastics are making their way into our food and our drink, and we really don't know at this point the long-term impacts on humans or animals. Fourth is the economic impact to both residents and businesses in the community, and what are the costs for merchants to switch over to paper, how can these be mitigated, what's the impact on our fishing industry, our shellfish industry, tourism, all of these are important, so I think we need to have education on that. Further, the cost of landfilling, hauling, and disposing all this plastic. And fifth, an ordinance, you've written an ordinance, and I think there's a lot of confusion of what the ordinance actually does and does not prohibit. For example, those little newspaper bags, they're not going to be banned, you know, those little produce bags that wrap your chicken in the grocery store, they're not going to be banned. So I think to clarify to the public what is and is not going to be limited would be very helpful for the public. So in summary, the Conservation Commission encourages the town to support the Senate Bill 1003 as a minimum standard. We also encourage the Town Council to continue to work on the higher standard of the local ordinance, and we offer our support for your efforts in enlightening and informing and passing this important ordinance. And thank you for listening, and also thank you for your service.
Thank you. Tom Olson followed by Bruce Flax. I'm sorry. Questions come after everyone has had a chance to speak. It has to come after everyone's had a chance to speak, I'm sorry.
Tom Olson, 188 Crosswinds Drive in Noink. I'm also on the Conservation Commission and speaking as a representative for the Conservation Commission. Agenda item number 11 in your new business tonight is in regard to the town-owned property reuse evaluation process. As part of the Conservation Commission, we were asked to make a comments in regard to the Noink Garden, and part of that process is looking at town-owned reuse. We feel that as we reviewed the one-page process that is proposed back in your 9 April Committee of the Whole Meeting, that there's a, we noticed that there's a town manager established town-owned property evaluation committee. The Conservation Committee would like to have a representative or be willing to support that commission, that committee as established by the town manager, and we just want to make sure that that information is provided to you as you're making your decision process and for further consideration with the town manager also. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Flax followed by Eric Osman, Osman, sorry if I'm mispronouncing.
Good evening. Bruce Flax, 632 Noink Road in Groton. I am here to ask the council where they are with regards to tolls. You have, in my opinion, been eerily silent on this issue and seeing as you represent the citizens of Groton, and I and many others would like to hear, you have a discussion about this, and know, like to know where you stand. This Town Council, to the benefit of the citizens, does get out there and is actively social. There are posts on Facebook where members of the Groton Town Council address issues, post information, stay involved in inquiries. The one issue you seem to refuse to comment on is tolls. I respect State Rep. De La Cruz, he has an opinion and debates the issue, he's pro-toll, and although I disagree with him, at least he's forthright with his opinion. In my social posts, the only councilor who responded to my inquiries was Consular Heed. Thank you, Conrad, for replying, although you couldn't resist saying something unpleasant, but I guess that's what, I don't know, that's what we come to expect. You did post that you did not have an opinion on tolls, which is a little troubling to me. You're a Groton Town Council representing the people of Groton, as well as a Chair of the Democratic Party in Groton, and you don't have an opinion on tolls, it just seems very odd to me. Like many, I am opposed to them. In an eyewitness news Channel 3 poll initiated on May 3rd, 90% of people still think tolls are a bad idea. As recounted in the day last week, a poll released by Sacred Heart University Institute for Public Policy says 59% of 1,004 respondents reported they opposed implementing tolls. And 34.7% surveyed supported implementing electronic tolls on major highways. According to the results, 54.5% of people said they would change their driving routes to avoid toll roads if they were implemented on major highways in the state. That is one of the issues I believe will affect Groton and should be concerning the councillors. Tolls implemented between the Gold Star Bridge and the Rhode Island border will push people off I-95 and onto Route, you know, 184 and Route 1, increasing local traffic, making it undesirable for tourists, and putting increased pressure on our local roads. We all agree that roads need to be fixed, there's a lack of trust by me and many that the money raised will actually be spent on roads. I also worry that, as written, the per-mile rate charged can be increased with no oversight, and the state will have a direct line through EZ Pass to my and everybody else's bank account. This proposed bill would create the Connecticut Transportation Finance Authority, made up of 13 members, including three senators, three representatives, gubernatorial appointees, and commissioners, the transportation authority will be able to set toll rates, approve capital plans, establish an infrastructure bank, and issue bonds without the legislature voting. With regards to the role of Town Council on state issues, when Governor Malloy's proposed 2017 budget was threatening the school budget, a contingent including the city mayor, superintendent, town manager, and myself went up to fight for the town, and essentially won with the help from our state senator and our state rep. And it was nice to see two people come in tonight and speak to you about state issues, the plastic bags and the right to early voting. So those are issues that are state issues that clearly affect people in Groton. No less than 17 municipalities, including Montville and Lisbon, have passed a resolution opposing Governor Ned Lamont's tolling proposal. Branford, Cheshire, and Middletown got added to that list in the last few weeks. Let's call tolls what it is, another tax on Connecticut residents, the state already has a steep gas tax, one of the highest in the country. Please put aside your partisan politics and govern for those that elected you, as you do represent the people. The people of Groton deserve to know how the council feels about tolls, not to mention how you feel about the potential minimum wage and the paid family leave bills, which again will have a tremendous effect on local business. Perhaps you should check with the restaurants in Mystic, on the Groton side, of course, that are understandably worried. I thank you for the opportunity to address the council, and I hope you consider discussing a resolution that tells Hartford that Groton is opposed to tolls, and I have a sample resolution in case you're interested.
Thank you, Mr. Flax. Eric Osman followed by John Scott IV.
Hi, I'm Eric Osman, I am from 125 Eastwood Road, Groton. I'm also here to talk about tolls tonight, following up after Mr. Bruce Flax's presentation regards to the issue of the tolls here in Connecticut and the proposed plan. Just to kind of reiterate some of the things that Mr. Flax just, the recent poll that just came out from WFSB just this past weekend, 90.5% people are against tolls here in Connecticut and think it's a bad idea, 8.3 are for it, and 1.2 are undecided. We had two individuals that just came up here and spoke about plastic bags. We have out-of-state people that come through this, through Town of, I mean, come through our state, and as you probably know, during the summertime, our trash begins to accumulate on the side of the highways. And out-of-state people probably don't care. And as a Connecticut resident, I do care, I do care about the appearance of our state. So with the tolls in mind, that's going to affect a lot of things. It's going to affect the real estate market, it's going to affect the way, you know, businesses operate, we're going to have a lot of traffic getting diverted off onto side roads, which evidently is going to fall back on the towns to maintain those particular roads, so your taxes are going to go up. So, you know, I hope that you guys can give us a position on your, your position on tolls, how you feel about this tonight. Thank you.
John Scott, thank you, Mr. Osman. Could you state your name and address, please? I don't have it written.
Sure. I'm John Scott, I live at 674 Cow Hill Road in Mystic. I too am here to speak in favor of the resolution that Bruce Flax just passed into you guys that would basically make the council be in opposition to tolls. And I'll read into the record real quickly the meat and potatoes of what that resolution says. You know, "We're basically concerned about crowding of secondary roads, an increase of traffic accidents, and disruption of the pedestrian and cycling enjoyment in and around the roads affected. Traffic congestion, congestion, rather, from increased vehicles, traffic accidents, moving violations, impacting the demands and challenges for the police department, all of our fire departments, all of our fire districts, and other emergency personnel and first responders, causing significant safety concerns which will compromise the safety and welfare of residents and first responders. Dramatic increase in vehicular traffic townwide encroaching on our rural and scenic nature of our New England-style town, and a significant negative financial impact to the town's current economy and future economic development by creating a fiscal burden on all individuals and businesses, including but not limited to tourism, scientific research, military, and our defense industries." So as I said, it's going to impact our largest employers, the Navy, the Coast Guard, and all of our military personnel. Pfizer is going to be impacted, Electric Boat is going to be impacted, all of you sitting at that dais are going to be impacted, some of you drive an hour to work, do you have an extra $1,000 in your pocket to pay in tolls? All small employers, the meat and potato of what we want in this state are going to be impacted by tolls. It's bad for the economy because it takes money out of the economy, that money that could be invested in additional small business needs. As I said, it's bad for our emergency services personnel, we'll need increased police patrols to protect our secondary roads like Route 184 and Route 1. So we're going to need to, you guys are going to have to send more, spend more money on police, fire, and EMS. And you know that people are going to use Route 1 and Route 184 to bypass the tolls. Everybody has a smartphone, you just hit the little button, bypass toll roads, and where are they going to end up but on Route 184 and Route 1? So I'm opposed to tolls, and I hope that you guys will pass this resolution that would tell the governor, tell the legislature that you too are also opposed to tolls. The other thing that I wanted to talk about is House Bill 1139. We haven't heard any conversation from you on this. This is a bill that seems to be racing its way through the Connecticut General Assembly that would take your ability away to levy a car tax. It's a $6.5 million hole in your budget, which means that property tax is going to go up on all of our homes and all of our businesses. It's something I think you ought to be weighing in on, and I hope that you will do so. And then the last thing I want to talk about, I wasn't planning on talking about it, but there was a woman who spoke about early voting. I have some concerns about that bill. One of the concerns is, is that the, if it passes, you can set up polling places anywhere, including maybe a union hall, and is that the right place to put early voting? And with that, I'll leave you, but thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you. And that is it for the sign-up sheet for citizens petitions, is there, we'll have one last call, if anyone else is here that would like to speak. Please come up and state your name and address for the record, so I can record it, please.
Patty Smith, 255 Neptune Drive, Groton.
255.
255.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And in the interest of time, I am simply going to say that I stand here in support of the comments made by Bruce Flax and John Scott and others opposing tolls, and also asking you to consider the resolution that Mr. Flax handed out, to review it and to make a point of stating your opinions on the tolls, et cetera. I'm also in support of the displeasure, basically, over this House Bill 1139, and that would eliminate the town's ability to collect property taxes on cars. I do think that it, that it will create a lot of angst, frankly, and tax, extra taxes for the town. So that's it, thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you. Seeing no further comment. Okay. At this point, we are going to, again, move to, well, do you want to do, we were going to go to Groton Heights redevelopment because the gentleman from Thayer Mahan is here, and then we'll come back to the comments. Would you like to do that first?
I think if they have a question, it should be asked now.
Okay. Councilors of Perry, did you have a question for someone, or responses to citizens petitions?
Yes, I was considering the comments about the Conservation Commission on setting up a, better, on setting up educational programs for plastic, the problems with plastics and the waste plastic. And I wonder if you have looked at SEC TV and tried to set up programs to be published on SEC TV? Have you, just exactly, what do you hope to get from the Town Council in promoting education? So those are questions I had for you. I think there's a lot you can do without us, but if you need us for something, I'd like to know specifically what you want from us.
Oh, thank you. I think there was some interest, I think, from the mayor in having some kind of education program for the citizens, and at the Conservation Commission, we support that idea, and we were, we're basically offering to assist you in whatever manner you choose to move forward, the town chooses to move forward with this education. We don't have a specific agenda regarding it, we're just willing to kind of work in conjunction with you and support whatever happens, whether it's making videos, or helping make a website, or holding, you know, sitting in a room and inviting people in and going down to the high school and setting up tables where people can go table to table. We have a lot of, you know, we're willing to talk about ideas, and we just want to be of support to the town.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
The manager and staff are working out what would be the best way to present this, and I don't know if you want to comment on it this time, Mr. Burke?
So I heard different ideas from different council members, so I think what we're going to need eventually is a unified voice of the council to give some direction.
So that's something we'll need to consider and to give Mr. Burke direction as to how he would like the education to take place. Are there further councilor responses to the citizens petitions? I've got lots of hands. Parker, Franco, Heed, whoever wants to go first. Councilor Parker.
Thank you all for coming out to speak. As to the tolls, I, we did not receive, it's in the town clerk's hand, the ordinance, so we cannot comment on that or see it. Bruce Flax, didn't he give you, not give you something?
Are you talking about the resolution?
Resolution that he was thinking of, I'm sorry, not ordinance, resolution, so we, I can't speak to that or answer anything right then now.
Councilor Parker has the floor.
Until we can see it in front of me, I cannot comment. I know what I would like to say personally, but as a Town Council, I think we still need to hear more information from our state representatives. So until I have more information, I cannot comment on tolls. The HB 1139, I have to do more research myself, I physically have to read stuff and look at, review everything, so I'm just letting everybody know that. Thank you for the Conservation Team offering the help to come out and put on the workshops we're thinking of, and thank you all for, again, for coming out. Oh, I did have a question about how many people, how many people and businesses were
Hi, thank you. We had, we sent, we had the survey publicized in the day, and we also had it on the town website for quite a period of time. We received over 500 responses, which, out of what?
That's 500 from both businesses?
From both, yeah, and I personally went door-to-door in Mystic, and I was actually kind of amazed at the level of, the high level of support. It was much higher than I thought it would be. So, and out of that's 500 responses, I don't have the exact numbers here, but it was on the order of, you know, 80% positive, either extremely positive or pretty positive, and we had over 100 people offered to, we said, would you like to be, help and be involved in this process? We had over 100 respondents that said they would like to help and support it.
So only businesses in Mystic?
No, 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 all of Groton, it was, it was publicized, I personally went door-to-door in Mystic, it was publicized in all of the Town of Groton.
Would it be possible to get the actual numbers to see?
Absolutely, they're, they're on record in the town, they were, there was a presentation made, and they're in the, in the town records.
I know, but I just want to reiterate it again so that people understand, because I still think we need more input, I'm sorry.
Sure. Sure.
I just have more concerns about the, I had concerns. I was one of the ones that said, I need to hear more. So I'm going to ask again if we can at least resurvey or do something to get more input from the whole community.
I don't, I don't think that's my call. We were, we were charged with this by the town council to create a survey. We did create the survey, we administered the survey, and provided the results, and then at this point, then we handed it off back to the town.
Thank you.
I have the results. I will send them to you.
Thank you.
Okay. We have Councilor Franco, Heed, and Baumgardner.
Thank you all for coming. I, I believe on Bill 1139 regarding the car tax, John Burke, didn't you send a letter stating your stand on the position?
Yeah, I mentioned it in one of my other letters. It was, I think, concerning a different bill. However, the mayor and I had met with Susan Weiss, Lieutenant Governor, relayed those concerns, but I think it's a good idea to do a specific letter for 1139, and I'll do that.
Thank you. And when it comes to tolls.
11, yeah.
1139. And when it comes to tolls, I mean, I, like Councilor Parker, I have my own personal opinion, and I've heard two solutions basically for how to alleviate the financial burden for our infrastructure replacement and repairs, and I have many questions. And we just came off of a budget season, which we're very involved in, immersed in budgets. So I think now that I have a little bit more free time that I can take to review these items and read some more. And that's, and the plastic, I think the Groton Conservation has done a great job with that, and I'm very thankful for all they've done. And when we did a Groton cleanup, I witnessed it firsthand how badly we see plastic strewn about our town. And this is a, it's a big problem here, at least in our town. So, thank you.
Councilor Heed, Baumgardner, and Obring.
For Mr. Silver, we interviewed you, the personnel and Appointments Committee interviewed you, then we discovered there was a process by state statute or something. It was December. So I don't remember the exact details, but we had to go back and interview a second candidate, and then we put Mr. Nino in charge, or we put him in the seat, but I understand that was a temporary appointment to fill a vacancy. So another, there's another process coming too. It's a little bit complicated.
He's relaying the information correctly and the process.
All right, good. So we will be in touch, obviously. On the Conservation Commission and the plastics, thank you very much. We will, I'm sure, be discussing much more about this in the future. On tolls, I would say I had a position, but a lot of questions have been raised, and a lot of really good questions have been raised, and I would say there aren't just two opinions on this or two solutions. There's a lot of work that needs to be done on it. So, that's all I have to say about that.
Counsel, do you have anything else? Councilor Baumgardner and then Obring.
So thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. I know there were a plethora of issues discussed tonight, so I'll start with Ms. Weiss, thank you for coming out. I know, just from talking to a lot of young folks in town and kind of in my social circles, you know, there aren't enough opportunities to vote. And while it is just one day here in Connecticut, there are many other states where you're able to vote for multiple days, and it's a great way to engage folks who, you know, may be working all day, and also a way to, again, boost voter turnout, which is pretty abysmal when you look at some of the past elections. Even if you look at yesterday's election and seeing the turnout there, not nearly enough people in my eye turned out to vote for what is, I believe, a very important project impacting our state. In fact, that is a project that is heavily reliant on state funds, and as you know, our state right now is pretty strapped for cash. You know, every year now, we've been confronted with, you know, deficits upon deficits, and the reality is, unless there is an infusion of cash in terms of additional revenue dollars, we're not going to be able to pay for projects such as the Groton School Construction Project. So if you want to invest in our infrastructure, including our bridge, which will need to have a significant overhaul, that will cost hundreds of millions of dollars, invest in our ports, which will create hundreds of jobs, you know, support our military industrial base with EB and growth at the subbase, you absolutely have to invest in our infrastructure. And the fact of the matter is, the Special Transportation Fund is vastly underfunded. It needs that infusion of cash, and one way to do that will be through tolls revenue. So because of that, we have to have that conversation. If we don't, that fund will be unsolvable. You're going to be confronted with higher gas tax, higher gas taxes, and if it's not higher gas taxes, it's going to either become higher property taxes or higher taxes in other areas. So we have to take a look at it, and if we don't, we'd be doing a great disservice to, the next generation of residents will be living in the state, will have very poor infrastructure, and will not be supporting businesses in the future. So that's just the reality. You can argue with that. The Special Transportation Fund does not have the revenues to balance its, you know, to balance its budget in the future. We passed a lockbox recently. You know, we're, you know, this council, I know, you know, many, many members voiced their support for it, and it passed overwhelmingly here in town, and we need those revenues that will be locked in to go towards those infrastructure projects that we so badly need. On another front, I know the topic of House Bill 1139 came up. If I'm not mistaken, that bill hasn't even had a vote. It only had a public hearing. It's likely it won't even have a vote. So again, it's likely that it's simply dead. Additionally, in terms of plastics, the plastic ban, I had a conversation earlier in the day with Larry Dunn, who was unable to make it. He did say there were a couple of folks from the Conservation Commission who will be attending as well. They had said, and I also had this conversation with Councilor Heed a couple of weeks ago about next steps, but they had expressed that they would be likely to take up the mantle for pushing a public outreach campaign on this topic in the form of a public forum. I had a discussion with the Vice President of Mission Programs at Mystic Aquarium, Katie Cabrino, who expressed her interest in also participating in that public forum. So there are so many individuals in town within our surrounding area that are supportive of these efforts that would absolutely love to, again, push something that I think is not only good for business, good for the environment, but, you know, so important for, you know, our, you know, marine mammals. So there are a lot of things talked about. I could go on for hours, but I'll give up the floor.
Councilor Obring.
I just had a couple of questions. One of them, I probably should know the answer, but I don't. The Groton Housing Authority, isn't that a private entity? We don't own the Groton Housing Authority.
It is one of our commissions. You appoint the, the clerk's much more knowledgeable about it than I am, but they do have a, they have a private side to do some development, but the main board is under the public side, and it is appointed by the council.
Okay. I understand that, but the actual.
And ultimately, we own the land and facilities ultimately.
You own the land, they own the properties, is that how it goes?
No, the town owns the property, but it's a quasi-government, you know, so they, they do business independently under the state statute, but the town council gave, you know, started the commission, I mean, the authority. So, you know, it's, we are under your purview and the state. The state watches pretty closely.
Okay. Unlike many of the others, I do have a personal feeling about the tolls, and I'm quite sure that we will be sharing, you know, more of that in the future. As others have said, we've just been really swamped with the budget, and, you know, I know that there certainly are things that we need to talk to our state representatives about, but, you know, pretty basically, we're here to try to take the best care of what we can of Groton, and we're not at the state level. We certainly can talk with people, express our opinions and our feelings, but I think our job is here. So I'm not going to apologize for the fact that there's things we haven't done yet. I also think that it might be a good idea to have a joint meeting with the Conservation Committee. I think there's a lack of continuity between the two of us, and I think if we had a meeting and talked about it, we could probably come to some great resolutions and move forward. I did not want to go forward with it when it was brought up at our last meeting, I think it was, and I probably lost my friendship with Conrad.
No, no.
But the reason was, I wanted more education, and I did not know about the survey that had been done, and I apologize for that. But I wanted to have an open forum with businesses. Probably most of you don't remember back when Keldora was coming in, and we did forums with businesses, and it was very helpful. And I would like to do the same thing now. Talk with our businesses, see what they feel their problems are, see what we think we can do here, and then move forward on it. So I think that's probably, and I did respond to your email about tolls. I said, what's your thoughts? But I got back here. So just wanted to make that point. But I think that overall, this group is working very hard for Groton, and will continue to do that if that's possible. So, thank you very much.
Okay. We have completed our response to citizens petitions, and we are going to move to item 10A now, Article 10A. This is 2019-178 Groton Heights Redevelopment, Thayer Mahan presentation.
Excuse me. You're all going to need to get up now.
Do you need five minutes to set up? Okay, we'll take five minutes so Mr. Bronk can set up the materials. Okay, we are back at 7:46, and we are bumping ahead to item 10A, 2019-178 Groton Heights Redevelopment, Thayer Mahan presentation, on page 41 in your packet. There is no resolution, but Councilor Parker, did you just want to introduce it?
The town of Groton owns excess building and properties that are no longer needed for municipal uses or that have been acquired through foreclosures due to unpaid taxes. Thayer Mahan, did I say that correctly?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Was selected at the preferred, was selected as the preferred developer for the Groton Heights School Building, and they are prepared to offer a public presentation regarding the project. You want to read the background too?
I think we're good. Thank you. Thank you very much. Would you like to introduce, please?
I will. We are pleased to present Thayer Mahan and Rich Hein, the COO of the firm. Just a 30-second intro. We have many of these properties that we're working with. This is the first one out of the gate, as we like to say, and we've conducted the RFP process, we've done the interviews, we've selected our preferred developer, we're in final discussions, and this is the first opportunity where we're able to actually go to the entire community and try to educate them as to what the project entails. We're quite proud of that, and I think people should be quite happy after they see the presentation tonight.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, staff, and the general public, who I can't see too well, but thanks for the opportunity to present this project on the Groton Heights School Redevelopment Program. As you know, my firm responded to a RFP issued back in the fall of last year, was shortlisted as one of the interviewees. We interviewed in November, we were named preferred developer, I believe it was January, met with council and other various organizations, which I'll talk about in my update. And then, you know, we sit here before you today, kind of with the first public presentation. So we're very excited, and thanks again for letting me present. So first, I'm going to start out and talk a little bit about our company, Thayer Mahan, and what we do, how we do it, why we do it. Then I'm going to talk about the proposal, the actual redevelopment plan, then touch briefly on some updates since we last met on progress we're making in the process, and then I'm available for questions from the board or the public, however you folks want to structure the meeting. Thayer Mahan is a young company. We were founded in 2016 by myself and my partner, retired Vice Admiral Mike Connor. Mike was the commander of all submarine forces, United States, when he retired in 2015. We formed this company in January 2016 with the idea of providing to a host of different sectors the opportunity and options for using autonomous systems and sensors to gather and obtain what we call MDA, Maritime Domain Awareness. So our big thing that we do, unique to most other companies that sell hardware and sensors, is we provide what's called SaaS, or Search as a Service. So not only do we develop, invent, integrate existing and new sensors, but we actually deploy, operate remotely from our headquarters here in Groton, autonomous sensors or robots, as some people like to call them, all over the world. So the idea for the company was, and the reason for the name Thayer Mahan, which is a little bit of an odd name, some people might not recognize, but Alfred Thayer Mahan was a naval historian who wrote a book in 1890 called The Influence of Sea Power on History, and it changed the paradigm for naval thought. It talked about how important the navy or maritime and economic strength was to national power. So it was read in Germany, England, the United States, all over the world extensively. So when you think about the last century, turn of the century, the great battleship building from the Germans and the Brits and the Japanese and the United States, his idea started it. So his, the 20th century paradigm for big navies was large capital ships, high-profile, centralized, and it developed from battleships to carriers to submarines to where we are today. Our concept is a little different. We're trying to drive a paradigm shift of 21st century to what we call highly scalable distributor-connected forces that are low-profile, they're inexpensive, they're less risky because you don't have men occupying these things, they're non-intrusive, they're energy-independent, so they're energy harvesting. They use artificial intelligence, big data, machine learning, all the buzzwords you read about to gather and curate massive amounts of data about the oceans. So this is, our strategic vision is, there's kind of a national defense aspect and a commercial aspect. So pictured to the left is a Virginia-class submarine that costs about $3 billion. To the right is, the center, I'll say, is our outpost system, and our, to the right is our sea watch system. One is an acoustic sensor, the other is an electronic monitoring or think radio, you know, at-sea comm sensor. So for the same price, our systems cost about $1,500, so you can buy 2,000 for every one. But our vision is not to replace submarines. The idea is to augment the submarine force. When I was a young submariner living in Groton in 1983, which is where I met my partner, Mike Connor, we served together on USS Pittsburgh, we had 160 submarines today. We barely have 60. At any given time, about a quarter of them are at sea. The others are in some sort of maintenance overhaul, training period, stand-down, et cetera. So how does, how does the navy of today cover more areas, more navies, more threats than we experienced at the height of the Cold War? In my time, we were focused on the Russians. I guess to some extent, we're still focused on the Russians, but for a lot of reasons, maybe not exactly navy-related. But now, you know, Russia, China, North Korea, Iran, you know, just virtually every South American country, countries all over Asia have submarines. So as ex-submariners, you know, our problem initially was how do we use autonomous systems to detect submarines? The other part of our strategic vision has to do with maritime awareness, and the two subgroups there would be energy, so how do you build a sustainable maritime ecosystem? So you read about the exciting news about State Pierre and Orsted and Eversource and So you read about the exciting news about State Pierre and Orsted and Eversource and wind farming, you know, that's a big, that's a big undertaking. And we've already engaged several companies doing things like marine mammal monitoring. How does the vibration from these turbines affect wright whales, who are nearly extinct, and other marine mammals, and schools of fish, et cetera? Oil and gas, obviously, everything from environmental monitoring to vibration to seismic, most of those things can be done autonomously. And the second is illegal maritime activities, and what you see pictured here is a Coast Guard cutter interdicting what's known as a Panga, a high-speed drug-running boat that, you know, they run approximately 30 a day out of Columbia North, and we have all of maybe two Coast Guard cutters at any given time on station to try to interdict that. So one way to become a force multiplier is make sure that the Coast Guard, our large capital assets, are on station doing interdictions all the time, not, and we're taking over kind of the low-hanging fruit for autonomous search. And then, you know, illegal fishing is just a massive problem that I could talk for hours about, but so that's another avenue that we can assist nations, non-governmental organizations, environmentalists, et cetera. So who's Thayer Mahan? So the founders are Mike and myself, and we have a third founder, Dr. John Keough, who's a 15-year Harvard professor entrepreneur, kind of known nationally as Mr. Innovation. We started out in 2016 with two employees, moved to five in 2017. At the end of 2018, we had 18, now we're at 24, and we'll probably be at 32 to 35 by the end of this year and maybe more. We represent a wide variety of universities throughout the country. We're generally consists of, you know, high-tech engineers, software code writers, ex-navy. We actually have a representative of every branch of the armed forces on our staff except the Air Force. We haven't quite zoned in on an Air Force mission yet, but so that's who we are, what we do. We do command and control and Search as a Service from our command center here in Groton, which is pictured here, and a lot of you took the time to come visit us, and I really appreciate the time you spent to do your due diligence on us. But basically, our autonomous sensors, in whatever the operating area are, they report detections via satellite back to our command center. Our entire business is based in the cloud, so it's a cloud-based system. We can distribute that information to any government, corporate, you know, or entity all over the world remotely. So it's real-time, the time lag between a detection and us reporting to whoever our client is is anywhere from two to five minutes, so. And this, this is done right here in Groton. We also do data analysis and integration, so what I mean there is bringing in all these sensor inputs and their satellite imagery, their RF, their acoustic. We analyze and curate the data, and then we, we send curated data to the Coast Guard, for instance. We don't send them scissor grams on time versus frequency of what we're listening to. What they care about is, is that a bad guy, and should I go chase him? And we provide that information. We do what we call light fabrication, prototyping, and assembly. This is a picture of our plant here in Groton. We have two 3D printers, a laser cutter. We do a lot of light assembly. Even though you see sparks flying there, we're not a manufacturing company in any sense. We do assembly and integration and a lot of software encoding. Intellectual property in our short time in existence, we've amassed 10 patents in the areas you see there, integrated systems, ops and sensors, unmanned vehicles, and AI. We've got 10 trademarks and copyrights, and we've executed strategic partnering agreements with some recognizable names in the industry, Raytheon Boeing, Wingman, Kraken, and Oasis. Briefly, you know, some of our current customers include US Southern Command and the US Coast Guard, which is a counter-drug mission, Fleet Forces Command DARPA, which is the Defense Advanced Research Projects Agency. We also work for some of the big government military contractors, Boeing, Raytheon, and Lockheed Martin, and General Dynamics Electric Boat. Briefly, we were formed in 16, we did $40,000 in sales, but we raised a bunch of money based on our idea and our IP. We did $400,000 the next year, 2018, it was our first profitable year, we did $3 million, and we're on target right now to do over, in excess of $20 million in 2019. Our technologies are broken into two basics groups, a persistent surveillance systems, which does acoustic and electronic monitoring, and what we call port security and seabed systems, which does seabed, sub-seabed surveying for things like infrastructure, pipes, cables, oil wells, wind, bridge footings, et cetera. And a couple of this is our, in case you didn't know, recently, the Argentinian submarine San Juan was located after a year of fruitless searches by 40 different companies. We were hired by a company called Ocean Infinity to lay out search patterns based on our submarine experience and certain casualty procedures, last-known positions, acoustic transients, et cetera. And after setting out the search pattern in about four days, the submarine was located in about 3,000 feet of water off the coast of Argentina. We've signed a recent agreement with Pangio Subsea to do sub-seabed monitoring, so picture, seabed is the surface of the seabed, subsea is down to about 20 feet below the surface. We had a recent visit from Congressman Courtney, who's been a big proponent of what we do and a big supporter. He visited our new op center, and we gave him a whole demo, and he was there for a couple hours. It was really exciting for a little company like us. So the project, Groton Heights, we call it Corporate Headquarters Development Plan. So the existing building, which Paige has a picture, and you've all visited and you're aware of, was built in 1912, and it was actually a very beautiful structure with a lot of great detailing, corbeling, beautiful round-top windows on three sides, and, you know, served as a school till, I think it was 2007, if I remember correctly, but it's been idle for the last decade or so. During the '60s, I believe, a gym annex was added, which is not nearly as architecturally exciting as the main building. But, you know, we're really excited about the building because it, you know, being in my previous life, I've built a lot of structures and done a lot of adaptive reuse, and this building is in very good shape in terms of the skeleton, but it's got a ton of warts, you know, from hazardous materials, asbestos, lead, et cetera, leaky, you know, big hole in the roof and other things. So after a decade of being idle, it just needs some TLC, which we hope to do. So it's, you know, people talk about green projects, there is no greener project than doing an adaptive reuse of an existing building. So we're not going to tear it down, we don't, you know, obviously, we've got to legally dispose of all the hazardous materials that are there, but, you know, this building's is kind of an iconic structure for the period and for the neighborhood, and we plan on restoring and renovating it. Our business will become a major contributor to the Groton tax base, and what this building allows our company to do is, we're currently in 14,000 square feet, this provides approximately 27,000 square feet. We will not be relocating, we will be adding. So we anticipate between 40 and 50 new jobs in this facility, you know, which are, you know, high-paying tech jobs, clean industry, contributing to the Groton tax base. And I did a little analysis on potential tax revenue over the last, I'll say the next, I think I did it for a decade. Highest and best use of the property, there is a land swap contemplated with the Bill Memorial Library, and there will be no access, if approved as proposed, on Monument Street. All access will be on Smith, and I'll talk a little bit more about the library. We're going to retain virtually all the existing trees and significant landscape. We also propose a community garden and trellis area behind our building, which will actually be on the Bill Memorial Library property for community use by library personnel, our employees, and if the fence gets taken down, you know, visitors to the monument and the park up there. Minimal site lighting, we don't plan on any parking lot lighting or site lighting, it'll be all downlit, basically entry and safety lighting, so we won't be an illumination problem for the neighborhood. High-tech jobs, phase one, we project 43, phase two would be another 40. So ultimately, we could have as many as, you know, 80 jobs, although they won't all be located in this facility, some will be at our current facility. Also, there's an impact temporary local construction jobs, and based on the analysis we've done, it's essentially 47 jobs for one year using local contractors and subs. It'll be a major economic driver for Groton, taxes, fees, employee retail spending, meals, lodging taxes, sales taxes, secondary spending, housing, et cetera. But the big point that I would tell you folks is I think it helps solidify Groton as a hub for undersea innovation, marine robotics, and high-tech maritime solutions. So the land swap I spoke about was actually proposed by the Bill Memorial Library in the RFP that I responded to. On the left, you see the current, highlighted in pink there, the current site plan for the Groton School, and you'll see there's this kind of flag lot situation where the front door actually faces Monument Street, and there's a sidewalk that goes up there. That's the property Bill Memorial Library would like to incorporate into their facility. They own parcel B, which is indicated on the second photo there, so if approved, we've already agreed with the library and had several meetings with them that we would cede parcel A to them, and they would grant parcel B to us. So we would have one contiguous, almost rectangular site on Smith Street. So our site plan is in the proposal I did, you can see here, it doesn't quite show as good on small print, but basically, the dark burgundy are the existing buildings. So the main building is where we would have offices and engineering spaces, and then the gym, we would convert to a, kind of our light assembly and warehousing area. We also have in light burgundy potential future development, although we don't have any, any plans right now to do that, just, this is kind of to show, you know, say 10 years, what it could look like. And you'll see, just behind the main school building is where we had proposed the trellis and community park. The Bill Memorial Library would actually like it moved over kind of behind the existing gym, because they like to look at the back of the school, which has a real pretty elevation, but they don't really like the back of the gym, so. And that's, that's fine with us, we'll leave that to them. So basically, the summary, the site plan is consummate the land swap, no entrances on Monument Street, community garden meditation area for public use, two entrances on Smith, minimum site lighting, street trees, we plan on planting street trees all along Smith, asphalt parking areas and concrete sidewalks, as indicated on the site plan. We also plan on repairing the sidewalks, and there's a couple aprons that are in disrepair. Loading docks and truck delivery access will be on the side of the gym building. There's really no room in the back because it's so tight to the library property line. And then we propose to abandon, there's a paper street, which is indicated in very light print up there, that runs across the Bill Memorial Library property and bisects our proposed piece. So we would propose to abandon that paper street as part of our site plan application. The elevation, basically, the back becomes the front. On the lower left, you see the existing rear of the building, on the lower right, you see the existing front. We would convert the rear of the building to our front headquarters presentation. We have three proposed elevations, I'm showing one here. Final selection will be dictated by the Historic Commission in DC. They allow certain modifications of certain percentages of buildings, so, you know, we'd be happy with any of the three, this is one. And you see, we plan on adding buildings to the front elevation of the gym, which is currently just a stark brick wall with a green metal door. The building needs more light for our use, but also, we want to match the elevations and glazing that you see on the beautiful main building. The rear of the building, we don't propose to make any changes, you know, other than replacing windows and fixing the roof, et cetera, but cosmetically, you will see no changes to the, to the existing front, which would be our rear. Basement plan, you know, we plan on, there's a boys' and girls' locker room on the lower floor, we're going to convert those, you know, into modern bathrooms. The boiler room will become our utility space, obviously, we've got a lot of work to remove boilers and electric services and fire mains. And then the large area to the rear of the building, and I call it our rear, will be open engineering space for doing things like, you know, 3D printers, design, soldering, et cetera. And then the assembly warehouse area is in the gym. We do also plan on adding an elevator for handicap access. The first floor, front and rear elevations are reversed, so there'll be a foyer in the new front with controlled access. We are a secure defense facility, so we have to control access, you can see where the elevator will be. We'll have some final and fine assembly, a lot of coders and, you know, computer activities in those areas. There'll be an employee lounge, employee kitchen, and some flex space for engineering and research. Top floor will be engineering offices, executive offices, two more command centers, probably one centered on Atlantic activity, one centered on Pacific, and the facility on Leonard Drive where we currently are will probably be focused on oil and gas and fisheries activity. This is just my drawing of what a potential, obviously, I didn't pay an architect to draw this, or it would have been better, but, but just showing that potentially, if we do build another building on the, I guess it's the northern part of the property, that the piece that we would be getting from Bill Memorial Library, it would be architecturally consistent with the 1912 schoolhouse. This just talks a little bit about who the, my architect, my land planner, and myself and financial companies are that back us. Purchase terms, we pretty much went over them, land swap, relocate electrical transformers, some sewer and waterline easements that need to be done, relocate the fire main. We're going to apply for an economic assistance infrastructure grant, which is in process. We've agreed to take on the environmental remediation for asbestos, lead, and mold, a decision that I'm regretting right now as our experts continue to move through the building, because that part is a mess. Confirmation of zoning approval, two permitted accesses on Smith, abandon the paper street. I can go on, but it's the same stuff we've, we've talked about, and in the interest of time, I'll move forward. So here's a recent activity update since we last met. We've conducted a number of community outreach meetings. We met with the Bill Memorial Library, first with their six-member team, then their full board, and then their full board toured our existing facility. Those meetings were cordial and cooperative and actually exciting, and coming up with a whole lot of ways that we can collaborate. We've had a, we sponsored Dr. Keough, one of our founders, to do a, one of the things he does is he works nationally on innovation related to libraries, believe it or not. So he came and gave a talk called Making Libraries Relevant Again, and he gave it to the folks at the library, and they invited a whole bunch of area librarians. We had about 35 attendees and a lot of great ideas and concepts came out of that, including a connection with the Connecticut Education Network regarding bringing high-speed fiber internet to the library via our facility, because they've, they've gotten quotes over the years, and they just simply can't afford it, but we are working with CEN to, to basically subsidize that effort, because we, we need that sort of internet access, and to let them piggyback onto our application will be a big plus. That was one of the things they cited as their biggest problem. So we're, we're working actively on that. We've done meetings in the neighborhood of Groton Heights, we hand-delivered invitations to about 45 homes immediately adjacent. We had a meeting at the library with about 20 attendees, and then several of the interested neighbors wanted to see our facility, so they came and toured, and that was fun, they enjoyed seeing what we do. Local government outreach meetings, we've presented, obviously, to the Groton Town Council during the initial interview and a previous executive session presentation. We've did a town council tour, most of you, if not all of you, came to our tour, and we appreciate your interest, that was fun. We have a meeting planned, I believe it's the 28th of this month at the city, to do a similar public presentation in the to do a similar public presentation in the city facility, but I have met individually with the mayor, planning, economic development, fire, police, and building departments over there, and you guys did a nice Facebook announcement. Caught me a little bit by surprise, but the first call I got was from a local reporter and said, "Oh, I just saw the posting on Facebook." And I'm not a real Facebook guru by any stretch, so I said, "Well, that's nice, what's it about?" So, but that, you know, we've had nothing but positive responses. Again, the Connecticut Education Network, we've already met with them and we have a proposal from them. BML identified slow internet as their biggest problem up there for library growth and future things. Regarding design and planning, like Paige said, we have a memorandum of understanding that we've exchanged comments. I believe it's ready for execution upon council review and approval. We've hired our architect, we've already documented all the existing conditions, formatted in CAD, ready to go. Land planning, we've done preliminary landscape and site work. We've had hazardous materials inspection for all the, you know, the trifecta of bad guys, asbestos lead, and mold, and we've completed all our conceptual budgeting and preliminary quoting and arranged for financing, so. And then, I'll just give one shout-out to the state of Connecticut. I was invited to a meeting up with the new DECD Commissioner named David Lehman in Hartford about two weeks ago, and I told him, you know, "We could have located our company virtually anywhere," and there were reasons to do it in other places, but both Mike and I are New Englanders originally, I'm from Long Island, he's from Boston, which makes for an interesting Yankees-Red Sox rivalry for the last thirty-five years. You know, but against all advice, you know, we came to Connecticut. Everybody said Connecticut's a terrible place to do business, and what I relayed to the Commissioner is, you know, it is not. I mean, we have been, you know, it's been a pleasure working with, you know, your staff and you as a council, but, you know, we've participated in the Department of Labor Apprentices Program, the IWT Training Program, the Hiring of Vets Programs. We did, we've gotten two grant slash small business loans, one from the Connecticut Innovation, I think they're called, CTI, and the other was from the Connecticut Small Business Express. We've tried to participate as good residents, I currently serve as a member of the TRIP and Naval and Maritime Consortium, but I got to say, you know, this has been a real eye-opener, and I conveyed to the Commissioner that you really need to market it, you know, better, because Connecticut's a good place to do business, and got a great, you know, quality of life, and now that I'm expert on pickleball and tolls and storm windows, I can convey even more message out there, but, you know, thanks to you and your staff and everybody else. So, the rest of the presentation, I'm going to cut short, because just talk specifically about our seabed systems group and some of the technologies and things we would be doing. So, anyway, that's, I don't know how much time I took, but I tried to talk fast and cover a lot of ground, so with that, I conclude my remarks and happy to take any questions from council or the audience, whatever you guys see fit.
Well, thank you. I think we're all very happy to see you again, and I think we're all very pleased, and I just want to say, this is the kind of thing we had been hoping when we came on as a council, to have this kind of economic development, but it's good economic development and it's good for the neighborhood, good for the town, good for you. I like that you are going to be preserving the integrity of the building and the neighborhood, preserving the character. I know that the neighbors received your presentation very well. The library, your direct neighbor, is thrilled to be having you come in there, and you have a great relationship, starting with the swap of the property and the working relationship that you talked about, and I think, I think we're all, I think I can say safely, we're all very pleased and very happy that this is moving forward, and thank you to town staff for facilitating this. This is not something that I don't think any of us would have imagined could go there, but I hope it's going to work out wonderful for everyone. And Counselors, wish to speak. Counselor Franco.
Well, I'm excited about this, and I'm happy that you're welcomed in the community, that's a great plus. Do you have any specific timeline of what you think your progress will be?
Yeah, we're, I think, you know, we're working at the pace of government and lawyers, et cetera, so I think executing the MOU will be, you know, relatively soon, probably after the, you know, our city, our city meeting is probably the last of the public presentations. After that, if we're talking to the city, you know, I have to go through site plan review and plan, so we're going to take that time over the summer, and, you know, we would like to be breaking ground in the fall, but, you know, that may be ambitious, I don't, I've never done permitting in the city of Groton before, but they seem anxious as well to move this along, so. We're growing fast and we're hiring a lot of people, and pretty soon, there's going to be three people sitting in my office, and I'm not going to be happy about that, so, we're anxious to roll.
That's great. I'd like to give you a heads-up, so you're not surprised. I was invited to the Fitch Robotics Team, who gave me a presentation and showed me around, and I gave them your contact information, just to let you know.
You know, we've spoken about that, the library folks encouraged us to connect with them. We've actually, among our hires, we have two Fitch High School graduates, which is always nice to keep people in the community that grow up in the community, but, yeah, we plan on, you know, we're doing internships with UConn, we're doing some stuff with the library, obviously, and working with Fitch and the robotics kids would be great. We were just over at the Coast Guard Academy evaluating some senior engineering projects, so, you know, we got a lot of young energetic engineers and a couple old guys like Mike and I who enjoy this stuff, so, yeah, encourage them to call me.
I will, and I was hoping that maybe you might want to give, I guess the team is about sixty kids now.
Wow.
And they're like number one in the New England region, so.
Well, I'll invite them down, they can see what we do, and then, maybe we can collaborate.
I think they'd be very excited about that, that would be wonderful.
All right, thanks for the heads-up and.
Thank you.
Counselor Baumgartner and then Atwater.
I'd definitely like to align my comments with the mayor and Counselor Franco on just the sheer excitement in having you here and, you know, growing at the rate you are, so keep up the great work. Just a few questions regarding your kind of involvement in TRIP. I know the town council sort of sanctions our, you know, Groton's involvement in the program, and what benefits have, you know, what benefits have you had in personally, professionally, in participating, and how do you think that has been helpful to Thamrahann?
You know, all these organizations kind of merge into one for me. I just was appointed last week to the TRIP board, but I did participate in their brainstorming session about some of the economic development ideas for Thame Street. The Naval and Maritime Consortium did a, and I think they worked with TRIP to do a program down at Avery Point where Electric Boat and, at the time, Deepwater Wind, which is now Orsted and us presented, which was a little intimidating, you know, I took, when I got there, I didn't really know the program, but it was probably three or four hundred people, it was very well-attended, and it was a great networking event, and, but after listening to EB and listening to Orsted, I completely changed my remarks, because I remember the guy from EB said, you know, "After we hire three or four thousand people, we'll have seventeen thousand employees," and Orsted was talking about, I think it was seventy-five hundred megawatts of power expected to be generated in the wind farms. So, my remark started with, I said, "I'm going to talk to you about what it's like to be small." I said, "Electric Boat has a thousand times more employees than we have at the time," I said, "and we operate on a twenty-watt budget with our robots," so I said, "That's a little intimidating." But it was a great event, and we actually connected with Orsted and some of the proposed work, that survey work and acoustic monitoring is going to be with that Danish company, which, you know, we know now is going to have a big presence in New London, so, but, you know, for us, and it's been fun. I think the TRIP folks, they needed some more business members, and I think I represent kind of the small business component of that, so I anticipate, but those are two specifics, you know, to answer your question.
That's great. And in terms of the existing real estate you, the Thamrahann is in, when you vacate the premises to go to.
We're not going to vacate.
Correct, but, so, you'll continue to use all of the existing square footage?
Yeah, yeah, so we're going to keep the fourteen thousand feet we're currently in, and then this twenty-seven thousand will be, will house our expansion, and we'll probably reorganize the systems a little bit, and, you know, which op centers are doing, you know, secure government work versus which are doing commercial activities, but, yeah, it's space we really need.
And lastly, you mentioned work with apprenticeship programs, could you speak to that?
For which?
Apprenticeship programs?
Oh, yeah, so the state of Connecticut has a, or the Department of Labor has a program called, and I'll butcher up the name, but it's basically an apprenticeship program, and one of the categories of apprentices that a lot of our folks fall under are called mechatronics engineers, so it's kind of a blending of mechanical and electrical engineers and technicians, and what they do is, they offer a six thousand dollar per year subsidy for two years for up to six employees that meet certain training criteria, and with all the training our guys do, you know, that's a generous subsidy, so, you know, the idea is to help us grow and hire, so. And then, the other program was a cooperative training program where, you know, you submit training programs, so for us, it's wave glider pilots, it's acoustic engineers, it's guys that can operate in the command center. You submit those, and if they're approved by the state, you get reimbursed fifty percent of the cost, so we don't, not for travel and food and stuff, but at least for the program, so. Unfortunately for us, all of our employees go to Hawaii as their first training, so the flights and the food and hotels are a little pricey, but at least we get fifty percent back on the actual school expense, so those are the two programs. They've been, actually, Paige connected me with that whole cluster of folks in DECD to pursue those.
I'd expect nothing less.
Paige is, let me tell you, you got a winner here, and I probably shouldn't personally endorse anybody, but he's been a real visionary in terms of what we're trying to do and helped us in countless ways, so.
So, we're lucky to have you both. Thank you.
Counselor Atwater.
I'd like to, again, along with everybody else, it's great to have you here, and I would hope, even though we went on a tour of your current location on Leonard Drive, that when you finish.
Oh, yeah.
Groton Heights, we would love to come back again.
You guys, you guys, I'll go to the Fourth of July party up there, the views are pretty amazing.
One small question, Rich, are you thinking of replacing any of your equipment with beluga whales?
No, I did read that article, though, apparently, the Russians are way ahead of us in that regard. They don't make a lot of noise, so they're a tough, although I should say, they do make noise, but whales make very distinctive noises, but we're kind of expert on ride whales and humpbacks, but not belugas yet, but apparently, that better get hot on that.
Counselor Obray.
I just want to say, I think this is great. I had the pleasure of being part of the group that reviewed everything originally, and our illustrious leader beside you does do a great, great job, and I think it's going to be a real asset for Groton, so I'm very, very happy it's happening.
Yeah, we're looking forward to a long, long relationship.
Great.
Very good.
Just a final comment, you know, we've done a lot to try to educate people about what we're trying to promote economically, and decades ago, we would zone it, that was our responsibility, and we wait for a developer to come in, and I think this is a perfect example of how we're trying to partner. That's the model for successful economic development, where public investment, resources, time, funds blend with private, and as you can tell, this is a multimillion-dollar project. It's not easy to do, so it takes both parties coming in to do it, it's not, we own the land and you handle everything else, so I think it's important to show how this can work, and it, the public-private partnerships benefit us with jobs, environmental remediation, economic growth, taxes, so really, that is a model that I think this indicates, and I'm hoping people will understand it as we move into future projects.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Anything else? Well, thank you very much for coming out tonight, and good luck, and hopefully, we'll see you.
Thanks again.
Around soon.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We are going back to the regular scheduled program, so, I'm sorry? Okay. Do you need another recess?
No, I just wanted to, as he's packing up his stuff.
Oh, okay. All right, so we're going to go back to Roman numeral three, and then from there, move through the rest of the agenda as stated, so if everyone kind of wants to get their self-organized, I think we're good. All right, so we're going to recognitions, awards, and memorials, three, and Counselor Baum, let's see, who wanted to read National Prevention Week on page three, Counselor Parker? Thank you.
Proclamation recognizing National Prevention Week 2019, whereas substance abuse and mental health problems are issues that affect all communities nationwide, and whereas the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, S.A.H.A., HHS.A., created and observed this week to raise awareness to substance abuse and mental health across the country, and whereas data collected from the 2018 Groton Youth Survey for grades seven through twelve indicates that only forty-five percent of Groton youth consider marijuana harmful, twenty-five percent do not consider prescription drug misuse harmful, twenty percent do not consider e-cigarettes or vaping harmful, ten percent have ridden as a passenger with someone under the influence of drugs or alcohol, thirty percent say that when they have a problem, they keep it to themselves, twenty percent report feeling sad most of the time, twenty-two percent report often feeling anxious, fourteen percent report often feeling depressed, twenty percent report that they have been bullied at school within the past year, seventeen percent report that they have been bullied electronically, fifteen percent report that they have gambled, and twenty percent report that alcohol has caused problems in their home. And whereas while behavioral health issues are of national concern, National Prevention Week is an opportunity to raise awareness locally, and this year, the theme is titled "Inspiring Action, Changing Lives." And whereas we have the power to improve and more importantly, change lives, through National Prevention Week, people become more aware and able to recognize the signs of mental health issues and substance abuse disorders. And whereas we in Groton need to recognize the seriousness of substance use and mental health issues in our community, understand the power of prevention and the tireless efforts of those working to make a difference, now therefore be it resolved, on behalf of the Groton Town Council, I am asking the citizens of Groton, Connecticut, to join me in observing National Prevention Week during the week of May 12th through the 18th, 2019, dated at Groton, Connecticut, the seventh day of May, signed by the mayor of the town of Groton, Mayor Patrice Granatowski.
Thank you, Counselor Parker. We have two more proclamations, I would ask if Counselor Baumgartner could read the Arbor Day proclamation, 2019-313.
Office of the mayor, Town of Groton, Connecticut, proclamation recognizing Arbor Day, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide a habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are renewables, resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees- countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our town increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas in recognition of National Arbor Day, a tree planting ceremony took place on Friday, April 26th, 2019, when two European hornbeams, Carpinus betellus fagietta, and two red maples, Ackerrebrum armstrong, was planted at the Grotton Community Center. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Grotton does hereby urge all citizens to support all efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations, dated at Grotton, Connecticut, this 26th day of April, 2019.
Thank you, Counsel Baumgardner. And I'm going to ask Counsel Obray to read 2019-314 proclamation for Earth Day, since she presented this one at the event.
I forgot to leave it.
Okay.
And I will, I just want to mention that the Arbor Day, our manager actually read it, and it was quite a day. And the kids that were there were really great. But for the birthday, I was at Avery Point with David, and it was a really nice presentation. So we did a proclamation, proclamation recognizing Earth Day. Whereas all species play a unique role in the complex web of life and contribute to the ecosystem services on which all life on earth depends. The unique gift of intelligence and responsibility which humans beings inherit at birth make our species stewards of this plan, planet. And whereas the Town of Grotton has long acknowledged and acted upon this responsibility to protect and nurture the environment of its residents. And whereas the Town of Grotton especially welcomes the presence, scientific research, educational activities, and participation of the University of Connecticut at Avery Point in the life of our community and in the protection of the environment. And whereas the University of Connecticut at Avery Point and its student environmental organization, Echo Husky, are celebrating Earth Day on April 22nd on its beautiful coastal campus with festivities, music, food, and environmental exhibits, invite all Grotton residents to join in these events. Now therefore be resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Grotton hereby proclaims April 22nd, 2019, to be Earth Day in Grotton, Connecticut, and encourages all residents, businesses, and institutions in Grotton to join in the celebration at the Avery Point Campus on April 22nd from 11:30 to 1:30, and to actively engage as stewards of the earth, dated at Grotton, Connecticut, this 22nd day of April, 2019. Mayor of the Town of Grotton, Patrice Granatowski.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. We are on to Roman numeral seven, Consent Calendar. Counsel Franco, if you want to move the consent calendar, I know Counsel Heath then has something that I should correct, so.
I've never passed the consent calendar before. So I guess I make a motion to pass the consent calendar with the 2019-315 Special Trust contributions for April, 2019-131-1, various appointments, reappointments of March, 2019-311, April 2nd, 2019, and April 23rd, 2019 Town Council minutes. I so move.
Seven. Moved by Franco and seconded by Parker. And I know there is discussion. We'll go to Counsel Heath first to discuss the various appointments and reappointments.
Right. Just one correction. Albert Cologne was not appointed to the Ethics Commission. He will attend the next Personnel and Appointments Committee meeting. So we postponed the decision on him.
Are there any discussion points regarding the two sets of minutes? Counsel Baumgardner.
On page nine, the second to last line, Stat Service is attributable to the issuance of the $20 million of the GEO bonds, which should be GEO, as in general obligation.
Oh, I did make that correction, and I wrote down general obligation. Corrected it. I corrected that already.
So I rescind my correction.
On page 25 in your packet, it's page nine in the minutes of April 2nd. There was a typo. Instead of saying general obligation, it says GEO as in like GeoCash. Are there any other items for discussion or correction in the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of moving the consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so moved unanimously. Communication and reports. Town councilors, Counsel Baumgardner.
I will keep this short in the interest of time. I had the great privilege of attending the cleanup about a week ago at the senior center. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that Counsel Franco did an outstanding job crowling a ton of volunteers. There were young people, older people, people of all stripes in this town. And it was a great community gathering. I know there were bags and bags of trash that were accumulated from the sidewalk. And just wanted to say right on to Counsel Franco.
Thank you. Counsel Parker.
Okay. Well, there was the National Drug Takeback Day, which also happened to fall on the cleanup day. There was a toucher truck in the city. I went to the Fitch grad party bingo night, workers memorial, Walk for the Homeless, the Board of Ed, Town Council, City Council, RTM liaison meeting, and attended one of the RTM budget meetings.
Counsel Franco.
I also attended the RTM Board of Ed, Town Council, City Council liaison meeting as well. The Beautification Committee did hold the, their Earth Day cleanup on April 27th. We had over 60 volunteers show up. We cleaned over eight miles of area. I believe it made quite a difference. And one of the prizes that were given away was for most unique item, which the Boy Scouts found, an animal skull, like the skull from an animal. I don't know what type, but they found that. And actually, in the Sutton Park area. They also, a prize was awarded for the person or the group that collected the most nip bottles. And the ARC of New London participated, and they won that prize. And I will say, we collected all the nips, put them in one big giant bag, and it probably weighed somewhere between 30 to 40 pounds of empty plastic nip bottles. It was atrocious, and it was shocking all at once. So I also sent a picture of that off to the police chief, and we're going to try and maybe work on some litter prevention and possibly some other issues with the nip bottles. But also, at the state level, if everybody else is mentioning things going on up there, they are looking to put a deposit on these bottles. So if anybody would like to contact... Excuse me?
Nothing.
If anybody would like to contact their representatives, I think that would be of great interest to our area. That might help alleviate some of the litter around our town, because it is highly thrown everywhere.
Counsel Heath.
I have nothing to report, other than I did receive a communication, personally speaking, from Dunkin' Donuts, saying that they are going to get rid of their styrene cups. So, yeah, it's a process.
Walk for the Homeless?
Excellent.
Oh, yes, we did the Walk for the Homeless.
Yes, we did.
That was a lot of fun. We picked up a lot of nip bottles there, too.
Counsel Obray.
I have the pleasure, as I said, of attending both the Arbor Day and the Earth Day events. Also, I'd like to mention that the Rotary participated in the cleanup, but couldn't find where they were supposed to register. So they went out and did Thomas Road and another road and cleaned them up. So they were participating also. I think it was, you know, truly the first event of the Beautification Committee, and I think we'll move on to others now. And we're young as a committee, so we have a ways to go. But we have good leadership, and we have good people coming, and it's going to happen.
Counsel Atwater.
Well, I was out of town in the Beautification Cleanup, so I did 117 from Pequot Center to the Javas Smith House. But what I really wanted to say was, I picked up all the trash, but there were a lot of tree limbs and so forth that were along the reservoir. And when I went by today, that was all cleaned up. And I don't know who was responsible, but whoever was, I would like to thank them. So I bet that was quite nice. Okay. And then, and then the other, I was at the Children First Grotton Meeting this morning, and they're having a reception at the library tomorrow between 4:30 and 6:00, demonstration of what they do and explanation. Everyone's invited, so.
Counsel Schmidt.
Yes, the Eastern Connecticut Tourism District is affiliating with MCDC, a nonprofit, which is the Norwich Community Development Corporation, and will be locating its offices in Norwich. That's it.
Counsel Sperry.
I have no report.
Thank you. Along with Counsel Parker and Heath, I attended the homeless walk. We had members of the Board of Education and RTM members that all turned out. It was a good regional effort to support the New London Homeless Hospitality Center. Excuse me?
And the young ones.
And the family members, yes. Family members of the public servants. We've been attending budget RTM meetings as well, lending our support to the RTM members who are plowing their way through the budget right now. I had the pleasure of attending a Subvets anniversary dinner with submarine veterans from all over the country that gathered this past weekend to celebrate. And it's a really nice sense of camaraderie. They honor their fallen shipmates and just get back together. And we'll look forward to seeing them again on the July 4th parade. And thank you to everybody who turned out for the election yesterday. We have, the city election was held, but most importantly to the whole town is that the election, the referendum on the school building project passed with overwhelming support. So we're very pleased with that. All right.
Yes? If I could just make mention, unfortunately, I wasn't able to be there, but there was a change of command.
Yes, with Captain White Scaver. Mr. Bird attended on behalf of the town.
Right. I just wanted to say that, I just want to mention what a great relationship we had with him during the time he was here. And I'm looking forward to meeting the new captain, and hopefully we'll have that same kind of relationship, because it's very, very important to Grotton. So, heat to see him go.
Thank you for saying that. Clerk of the representative town meeting.
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor, the RTM, as you had stated in your report, is busy following through the budget, and they have quite a few more accounts to go through. It's, you never know. They could be finished tomorrow or Thursday. There's a regular meeting tomorrow. It starts at 7:30, and then following that meeting, they'll go back into their annual meeting. So they have to complete by the 25th, midnight by the 25th of May, by charter. So that's what they're doing.
Clerk of the council?
They do have one referral from you for fourth quarter transfers.
Right.
That will be referred tomorrow. And then for the Town Council, there's all sorts of things going on, but this is a long meeting. I did want to, just to mention that the results were, for the referendum, special referendum, were 1,132 votes in favor and 265 opposed. And it was varied between percentages of turnout, anywhere from 3%, the highest percentage was 11, which was a mystic.
Thank you. Town manager.
Good evening. As mentioned, I attended the Captain White Scaver's changeover and briefly met Captain Moore, the new commander. Went to the EDC meeting, the Arbor Day event. Leanne will be happy to know that Part IV construction is underway.
I noticed. Thank you very much.
And other than that, our attorney is working on the retirement changes for the non-union debt ordinance. He's actually quite a bit of work on that. And then I've made some adjustments to the local vendor ordinance or policy, and sent that back out to staff for further comment, and hoping to have something to you soon.
Thank you. And we have, Mr. Zagami is here. Did you have anything you wanted to report, Mr. Zagami? You don't have to. I just didn't know if you had anything you wanted to tell us about. You're on the agenda.
Okay. What we've been doing, that I've tried a lot of education out there is with our workers' compensation, we've been running a big thing on getting the, all the incentive plan out. We've been getting out the education. We have really quadrupled all of our education, all the different trainings, and now we're going into a new phase of redoing all the manuals. So we're really trying to work hard on making the awareness and all that for workers' comp. Safety and risk. That's it.
Very good. Thank you.
Almost missed me.
I have nothing to report. I have the committee to hold. Do you have any rules or personnel appointments reports? Counsel Heath. We are on to new business. We are down to Roman numeral 10B. And let's see. Is it Counsel Heath or Counsel Obray? Counsel Heath, we'll let you go. 2018-134-3, Plastics Reduction, statewide ban of single-use plastic bags, on page 42 in your packet.
I make a motion for item 2018-134, Plastics Reduction, statewide ban of single-use plastic bags. Resolution in support of the state's initiative to ban single-use plastic bags. Whereas the Town of Grotton believes that single-use plastic bags negatively impact our community by creating litter on our roadways, polluting our waterways and coastline, and endangering wildlife. And whereas the Town of Grotton is committed to reducing single-use plastic bags. And whereas the Town of Grotton has reviewed the Connecticut's General Assembly's Environment Committee's Senate Bill 1003, entitled An Act Concerning the Use of Single-Use Plastic and Paper Bags. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Grotton fully supports the statewide ban of plastic bags, endorses proposed Senate Bill 1003, and encourages the General Assembly to pass the proposed bill in current legislative session. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Heath, seconded by Baumgardner. Is there any discussion on 2018-134? Seeing none. All those in favor of 2018-134, Plastics Reduction, statewide ban of single-use plastic bags, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Abstention one, Parker. Excuse me?
I abstain.
You're abstaining as well? Seven in favor, zero opposed, two abstentions, Parker and Obray. Madam clerk, you good? All righty. We are on to Roman numeral 10C, 2019-2681, Libraries Lead with Digital Skills Grant Program, on page 43. Counsel Obray, please.
Let's see. Resolution authorizing the town manager and his designate to seek grant funding from the Public Library Association and Google to benefit the job seekers of Grotton in association with the Grotton Public Library Job Club and Workforce Development Programs. I so move.
I think you need to read the whole resolution.
Whole thing.
Yes, please.
Whereas Grotton citizens that are seeking jobs will benefit from an increase in workshops designed to improve their skills, a broader offering of workshop topics that will include resumes, cover letters, and job searching, and workforce development events to offset at semi-annual job fairs. And whereas the Grotton Public Library, through its weekly job club and monthly computer classes, will support workforce development and community collaboration. And whereas the Public Library Association and Google have funds available to provide and enhance these workforce development programs in support of job seekers and community development, and there, and now therefore be it resolved, the Town Council hereby authorizes the town manager or his designate to seek, execute, and receive grants funding in, receive grant funding in the amount of $1,000 from the Public Library Association and Google, which will be utilized by the Grotton Public which will be utilized by the Groton Public Library to benefit the job club and computer classes for job seekers in the Groton community. I so move.
Move by Overy and seconded by Zepari. Is there any discussion on the grant? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Abstentions? No abstentions. Nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions. All right, we are on to Roman numeral 10D, Counselor Atwater, 2019-2671 Tax Increment Financing Advisory, on page 44, please.
Resolution to abolish the existing TIF Advisory Committee and replace with the Economic Development Commission. Whereas the Town of Groton has completed a townwide market analysis with a recommendation to research and implement tax increment financing in Groton, and whereas the town created a tax increment financing advisory committee, and whereas the Town of Groton is implementing tax increment financing in the town utilizing the TIF Advisory Committee, and whereas the Town of Groton with assistance of the TIF Advisory Committee has completed a tax increment financing plan, policy, and two draft master plans, and whereas the advisory committee role has now shifted from an education and outreach, outreach role to that of reviewing plans and agreements for future development, and whereas the existing advisory committee will be abolished, and whereas the makeup of the TIF Advisory Committee would be the town's Economic Development Commission, and whereas the town increment financing project is a new economic development tool to encourage development and redevelopment in planned targeted areas in Groton, and now therefore be it resolved that the town council hereby appoints the existing Town of Groton Economic Development Commission as the TIF Advisory Committee. I so move.
Second. Moved by Atwater and seconded by Schmidt. Is there a discussion on 2019-267?
Any other questions?
Yes.
So will this be a permanent committee, and would you like to have this listed in the town register?
Mr. Bird, I believe it should be listed in the town register. I don't know if it's a permanent committee. Do you know the technicalities of this? Can we get back to you on this, please? We'll get back to you on this. Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, we'll vote on 2019-267, Tax Increment Financing Advisory Committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. 10, Roman numeral 10E, 2019-281 Economic Assistance Fund Award, 255 Route 12, Grand Wine and Spirits, on page 45. Counselor Schmidt, please.
Whereas the town has received an application from Grand Wine and Spirits for a grant from the Town of Groton Economic Assistance Fund to help defray infrastructure costs associated with constructing a commercial facility at 255 Route 12, and whereas documented infrastructure cost estimates total over $132,000 for utility connections, stormwater system improvements, and perimeter sidewalk construction, and whereas the requested funding would facilitate development of new commercial space in Groton in the Route 12 growth corridor, and whereas it has been estimated that the assessed value of the property would increase from approximately 1,200,000 pre-improvements to approximately 1,900,000 post-improvements, and whereas the Town of Groton Economic Development Commission reviewed materials provided by the economic development staff and supported an award request of $59,000 towards the infrastructure costs. Now therefore be it resolved that the town council approves an Economic Assistance Fund grant award of $59,000 to Grand Wine and Spirits for sewer line installation and roadway repair infrastructure costs at 255 Route 12 to be paid on a reimbursement basis contingent on the posting of a sign indicating the project was supported by Town of Groton Economic Assistance Fund, and after satisfying utility and sidewalk construction specifications and providing proof of payment of related costs, I so move.
Second. Moved by Schmidt and seconded by Parker. Is there a discussion on 2019-281? Counselor Overy.
I just have one question, but I, I think it will be covered when they, they do the utility and sidewalk construction specifications, but I just wanted to reiterate again, I went up and walked that area, and where they're proposing to put the sidewalk is not appropriate. So if we can just be sure that it's done correctly. Mr. Town Manager.
Well, that will ultimately leave a planning commission item, but there's only commissioner, but I don't think we have a, say, a particular location.
Just want to make a note that it's done correctly.
I will reach out to planning.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on 2019-281? Counselor Zepari.
I think we have to be extremely careful on using public money to develop private enterprise. This is, when we make grants for the, for instance, the building that Grand is building on Route 12 is a new building to be used for private purposes and for private gain of that particular company. The grants we make must be restricted to infrastructure of public property. And I, I, I think that Leanne's comment about the location of the sidewalk is, is appropriate. If we're putting sidewalks into private property and not maintaining them on public property, it's a concern. So I, I think we have to be vigilant about this. I'm not saying that we should not support this resolution. I'm saying we should be very careful as we move forward with this program.
According to the resolution, this is for the sewer line installation, the roadway repair, and it has to satisfy utility and sidewalk construction specifications as per Mr. Bird said, it has to go through the planning commission. So it looks like it should meet your criteria that you've just requested, and I believe there are very clear cut criteria for using Economic Assistance Fund grants.
There's a policy.
Yeah, there's a clear policy in place, but thank you, so noted, Counselors Zepari. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we will vote on 2019-281 Economic Assistance Fund Award, 255 Route 12, Grand Wine and Spirits. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. Counselor Zepari, 2019-2791 Economic Assistance Fund Award, 5 Water Street, Sift Bake Shop, on page 46, please.
Resolution approving a grant of economic assistance to fund, assistant funds to Sift Bake Shop. Whereas the town has received an application from Sift Bake Shop for a grant from the Town of Groton Economic Assistance Fund to help defray infrastructure costs associated with constructing a commercial kitchen addition at 5 Water Street, and whereas documented infrastructure cost estimates over $57,000 for site work, utility upgrades, and stormwater system upgrades, and whereas the requested funding would facilitate development of expanded commercial space for growing business in Groton, and whereas it has been estimated that the assessed value of the property would increase from approximately 556,000 pre-improvements to approximately 1,85,000 post-improvements, and whereas the Town of Groton Economic Development Commission reviewed materials provided by the economic development staff and supported the award requested of $28,300 toward infrastructure costs. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Groton approves an Economic Assistance Fund grant award of $28,300 to Sift Bake Shop for site work, utility upgrade, stormwater systems upgrades costs at 5 Water Street to be paid on a reimbursement basement, basis contingent on the posting of a sign indicating the project was supported by Town of Groton Economic Assistance Fund, and after satisfying construction specifications and providing proof of payment of related costs. I so move.
Second. Moved by Zepari and seconded by Franco. Any discussion on 2019-279?
I saw you work there, should I not?
It's, it's up to you. I don't think you benefit directly.
Nope.
So I think as long as you stated for the record clearly that way the clerk could hear.
I saw you work at that establishment, so I just want to not have a conflict.
Well, there you just, you just announced it, so you're all set.
There you go. There was a hand here.
Yes.
Counselor Franco.
As I've attended the Economic Development Committee meetings and listened to all of these that have come through, I mean, we're supposed to be spending this money on economic assistance, and it's a good thing. And when you're spending it, that means that economic development is happening in our town, and we're supposed to celebrate that. And they're basically being used not so much for interior or their own gain inside, but it's supposed to help with the issues that we, that they've been funding. It's mostly on the outside issues like sewer and sidewalks and those type of things that are more, that if they leave, these are things that really help to stop, like create and make the establishment come to fruition. So I think it's a very good thing that we spend this type of money, and I'm very happy about it. Thank you.
Any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, we will vote on 2019-279 Economic Assistance Fund Award, 5 Water Street, Sift Bake Shop. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. Counselor Bumgardner, page 47, please. This is item 2019-2461 Beautification Committee Addition of Alternate Members.
Resolution adding alternate members to the beautification committee. Whereas the town previously established a beautification committee, and whereas the town has determined that there is a need for alternate members to be appointed to the committee, now therefore be it resolved that the town council approves the creation of three alternate member positions with two-year terms for the beautification committee. So moved.
Is there a second? Moved by Bumgardner, seconded by Zepari. Any discussion on 2019-246? Seeing none, we will vote on 2019-246 Beautification Committee Addition of Alternate Members. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. Counselor Parker, you are on page 48. 2019-2471 Groton Resilience and Sustainability Task Force Addition of Alternate Members, please.
Whereas the town previously established a resilience and sustainability task force, and whereas the town has determined that there is a need for alternate members to be appointed to the task force, now therefore be it resolved that the town council approves the creation of two alternate member positions with two-year terms for the resilience and sustainability task force. I so move.
Second. Moved by Parker, seconded by Schmidt. Any discussion? Counselor Heath.
Just want to quickly point out, normally you remind everybody that this is town council, so we've already discussed this at the committee of the whole meeting.
Yes.
So these aren't rubber stamps.
Right.
It's been pretty much discussed.
Thank you. I forgot to say that.
Not a problem.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of 2019-247 Groton Resilience and Sustainability Task Force Addition of Alternate Members, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are on page 49. 2019-2561 Seat Appointment. Counselor Franco.
I make a motion, pointing David Atwater to the Southeast Area Transit Seat Board. Resolve that the town council appoints Counselor David Atwater to the Southeast Area Transit Seat Board. I so move.
Second. Moved by Franco and seconded by Parker. Any discussion on this item? I'd just like to thank Counselor Atwater for agreeing to serve in this capacity on behalf of the town. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of 2019-256 Seat Appointment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. Counselor Heath, we will be on page 50 for 2019-2161 Librarian I and Library Assistant Positions, please.
Make a motion for a resolution approving the fulfillment of Librarian I and Library Assistant positions at Groton Public Library, whereas the library has recently promoted a Librarian II to the manager of public services thereby leaving a Librarian II vacancy, and whereas the library will fill said Librarian II vacancy with a Librarian I, a lower-level union salary position, and whereas the library will fill a full-time library assistant vacancy with a part-time library assistant, and whereas the town manager concurs with and recommends adoption of the plan as submitted, and be it resolved that the town council approves the fulfillment of the Librarian I and Library Assistant part-time positions as requested, I so move.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Heath, seconded by Franco. Mr. Bird, did you want to discuss anything on this?
Just a reminder that that change was made in the budget, was a savings of, I believe it was 35,000 that we saved with that plan.
Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor of 2019-216 Librarian I and Library Assistant Positions, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. And we are on to Counselor Overy on page 51. 2019-249 Town-Owned Property Reuse Evaluation Process, I'm sorry, I slaughtered that. Town-Owned Property Reuse Evaluation Process.
Whereas the 2016 Plan of Conservation and Development recommended criteria to be developed to evaluate the reuse of sale or town-owned property, now therefore be it resolved that the town council adopts the town-owned property reuse evaluation process, and be it further resolved that the reuse evaluation process shall apply to any future properties being considered for resale or reuse. I so move, sorry.
Moved by Overy, seconded by Atwater. I just, where is the actual, I was expecting it to be here. Thank you. Yeah, does everybody want to take a look? Counselor Bumgardner, would you pass this down, please?
Yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Overy.
Man, John, does this in any way hinder our EDC?
Thank you.
Selection process and so forth?
No.
Is this more of pieces of land that?
Yeah, but it's also internal use, too. For instance, they were, were getting ready to study what departments could go where, what the options are within the Fitch Middle School, former Fitch Middle School. So it'll be not only resale, it'll be reuse of existing, you know, location of departments so that we can present options to the council. And there was the comment about the Conservation Commission. At one point I had a mention in there, it's just part of the process, we'll always be seeking input from the Conservation Commission for a sale, however, there's internal things that doesn't make it appropriate to have a member on this. What we could add, and then you see the final part, you have to go to the planning commission, we could add some, you of course can, we'll be seeking input when we're appropriate along the way to many people, like, like with the Noink Gardens, we'd ask to get input from Noink zoning or that type of, so there'll be many groups that we get input from, and then you also can further send it out for input. We could codify that in number four where it says, Planning Commission, where it sends it to the planning commission, you could say, as well as to the Conservation Commission for comments, but we're gonna be doing that anyway, so it doesn't matter either way. I just want to make sure it's only for the sale, not for other internal things.
Okay. Does that help with your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion on 2019-249? Counselor Franco.
I was sort of under the impression that at our last COW, that this was sort of a draft. Is this your final?
It was recommended for approval, yes.
This was your final?
Yeah.
Okay.
The, Deb Jones put most of it together to make sure, the main thing is to have it meet the planning commission requirement, which she feels it does. We went through much longer versions, many different versions, and then this was the one the council recommended.
Okay. Are there any other comments on this motion? Andre? I'm sorry, Counselor Bumgardner.
Well, I agree with the goals, I think, in line with some of the concerns that many have raised regarding, you know, membership from the Conservation Commission. There's no mention in the goals about resiliency or sustainability, whether or not, you know, the, that property promotes resiliency, especially in protecting our, our coastline. So that's something I think we should certainly consider, especially if there are town-wide properties that are quote-unquote underutilized. properties that are quote-unquote underutilized, but may not be designated as open space. And those key parcels may be, parcels may be key to protecting our coastlines, especially as we're heading into the future.
We consider that part of the enhancing quality of life in many ways. When we're discussing, that was discussed, it could certainly be a separate number.
So that you're saying?
And that's part of what the conservation commission, as we refer to them too, and others, they'll be looking at that also.
So that would be addressed under goal number two, is what you're saying. Councilor Baumgartner's concerns?
I'm all for item six, like you said, at one point it was separate, you know, could promote resiliency, however you want to say it, and sustainability as an item six.
I would be in favor of that also.
If the council agrees on that, I think we should pursue that.
I could support that, yes.
I'm all for it, yeah.
I just wanted to mention, you know, be careful not to use catchphrases because this is something you want to last for a long time, and sustainability, those things are kind of a catchphrase right now, and it may not be sustainable, pardon the pun.
Forgiven. Anybody else want to speak before we go back to Councilor Franco? All right, Councilor Franco.
So if we go forward with this, the property process here, it can be altered in the future. I mean, this isn't what we're stuck with, and we have to.
No, we'll see how it goes.
And then so we could try this out, and if there's any issues, it could be brought back and say, hey, we decided to tweak it a bit.
And we're probably going to have to tweak, we have a separate policy for the sale of foreclosed properties. We think we'll probably have to tweak that too, to mesh them a little better together.
And when do you think you're going to be bringing that forward?
That one really doesn't have much effect on this, it's more that now that we have this, we've got to do that one. It's nothing too big, it's in the queue.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Matter of fact, we have a lot of policies we need to go over, that's on my list.
Seeing none, we'll vote on 2019-249 Town-Owned Property Reuse.
Wait, are we putting a motion in there, or are we just voting on what's in front of us?
I think we're voting on what's in front of us.
Okay, thank you.
Because there are only two of us that support it. We ready to vote on 2019-249? Yes? Okay. All those in favor of 2019-249 Town-Owned Property Reuse Evaluation Process, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Yes, once you're done, I just want to make a comment.
So moved unanimously. We are at the end of the agenda, but Mr. Burt wanted to speak before anybody moves anything else.
I was just going to say, I'll actually start a ongoing draft of ideas, you know, and I'll add the resiliency in there.
Thank you very much.
But we'll give it a while to see how it goes and, you know, so it don't come back every time for every change.
Sounds good. Any other business? Councilor Atwater.
In the weekly report, there's information about the bonding and so forth, I have some questions, and I don't know if this is the time to bring that up, or?
Cindy, it probably fits on the school bonding, or?
Yes, well, the issue of bonds that we, you know, for the school and WPCF.
Well, you could try me in otherwise, Cindy's the expert, though.
Well, the first question is.
And I don't have my notes with me.
That we issued 20 million of general obligation bonds with 15 million of obligation anticipation notes. But then under the WPCF, we just did anticipation notes, and there was no mention of ever that being converted into bonds, and I just wondered if that's the case or not.
I'll double check, but I thought that they were going to pull that off, maybe be able to pay that off within the next year, but I'll double check that.
Within the years, okay. And then the other question I have is, now that the bonds have been issued and we know the rates and so forth, I calculated that the interest rate for the payback on the million, the million dollars plus the interest would be $535,628 instead of $717,500. And I'm wondering if that will reduce the budget request, because it's more, now that we know what the cost is and what was in the budget was extensive.
It could reduce it a little bit. Yeah, I wondered that myself, I'm waiting to hear back from Cindy, but I'll get back to you on that.
And then, and then again, the first year since we have anticipation notes, the interest rate, because it's like a money market for one year, the interest on that, I calculated as $332,772. And I wondered if that also would reduce the current year's budget from the $717 number.
I'll ask Cindy to back to you.
And then my last question, if you might ask her, is, is it ever possible if these bond rates are lower than the current bonds that we have outstanding, can we retire those bonds and reissue new bonds at a lower rate?
I assume so, but I'll double check, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Overy.
I'd just like to ask that the item we brought back about calculating what we can do for Groton residents when they put in for a particular job.
A local bid break?
Yeah.
Say that again?
Local bid break.
Yeah, I just mentioned that, that I've made some changes to that, it's out to staff, and I hope to have something to you soon.
Great. That dollar's been longer than me.
Yeah.
Okay, we got Councilor Parker and then Baumgartner.
I just want to say, thanks you, Cindy, for putting in about the vehicles, because I did ask for that, so, thank you. Big, big thank you.
Councilor Baumgartner.
I recently read an article about Washington DC publishing a resiliency plan, and they spelt out about 68 initiatives that would kind of aid their efforts in preparing their city for higher sea levels and kind of much crazier natural disasters than we're used to seeing. And much of it was actually centered on not so much even kind of the nuts and bolts of, you know, beefing up your infrastructure to prepare for higher sea levels, but addressing issues of public health and income inequality and had a more holistic view of resiliency kind of going into the future. The mayor and I attended the first kickoff of the task force meeting, and there was a few comments mentioned about Hurricane Katrina and how really the high levels of poverty there and the lack of access to resources exacerbated the issues that they found down there. And so it's definitely something that I think the task force should look at, and certainly the council as well, kind of as we're starting to think about these issues more and more. And secondly, tonight, there were quite a few folks who talked about tolls, and I went through my emails, and not one, at no point did I receive any email regarding tolls. And so I'd just like to stress to the public that if you would like to correspond with the town councilors, we all have emails, town-sponsored emails, reach out to us that way, because many of us don't check Facebook on an everyday level. In fact, many of us try to avoid it and try to really utilize that platform as a personal page where we can share pictures of our families and our personal lives. So I just want to stress that because, you know, there were some comments made about, you know, reaching out to the council online and not hearing back from us, but if you want an answer, the best bet is to be either pick up the phone and talk to your counselor or send an email.
I agree that the best way, if you need to speak to one of us, is through email, not through social media. And I, just piggybacking on what Councilor Baumgartner said, we're going to need to make decisions about what lane we're going to stay in, and I kind of agreed with what Councilor Overy said before, our job is the Town of Groton. And do we really want to get out of that lane and try to solve the state's problems, or do we want to focus on the Town of Groton? So we had a lot of people bringing us issues tonight that we don't really control, and I think we should try to narrow our focus in and do the best we can with what we have right here. Mr. Burt wanted to speak.
Just to mention, I forgot to mention, I did go to the resiliency and resilience and sustainability task force meeting the other day. They're working on the Groton Long Point Bridge right now. They've requested some other information, so I'm getting with Gary on that, but that, it was a good meeting and they're very dedicated. And LeAnn, Councilor Overy, I just forwarded you the latest draft of the vendor policy just so you can take a look. I should have something finalized soon.
All right. Any other discussion? If not, go ahead.
I just, I did have a resident reach out to me, and I've been in touch with John Burt. There is, I believe, quite a stench coming out from Esker Point at this time of the year, every single year from what I'm being told. And if anybody is interested, I believe the answer is, it's seaweed. And Parks and Rec goes down there, and the date, I guess every morning, is our usual.
When it's prime season and off-season, it's once a week, but in the prime season, it's three times a week, but you can do it, and by the next day, it's bad again. And you also have to truck it up to Rhode Island, and so it sits sometimes for a couple days. It's bad, it's a bad smell. But it's not a, it's not a natural beach, it keeps wanting to revert, you know, to more of a wetland, so it's murky there. And they're doing everything they can, met with several neighbors along there last week to talk about some drainage issues, which we are moving forward with the drainage project there, but also about the seaweed. And one thing, if they want to clean up seaweed in front of their homes there along the beach, we're going to let them bring it over to our pile, and we'll truck it away, so they have a source, a way to get rid of it.
Councilor Overy.
Maybe we should look into, I can't remember where I saw it, but somewhere, they've come up with something now to do with seaweed. Gosh, I wish I could remember. There's some product that they found that they can actually get out of seaweed. So maybe we should, I'll try to do a little research on it.
Any ideas would be very welcome.
Yeah.
Because if I feel bad, it's not a bad.
It was offered to Grosso Tech for their beds at Groton Family Farm, and they graciously declined because of the stuff. Councilor Heath.
If it's like naturally trying to go back to being wetlands, should maybe the resiliency committee or something look into, do we have a better place for a beach, or?
I know Marcus talked about being, you know, past efforts that, the only real place was Avery, was that point, or was it Avery Point? But Point, but I think they actually looked at Avery Point too at one point, but there's not a lot of options out there, and they're all taken.
But Mr. Burt was very responsive, he received, again, email people.
They were indicated they were happy with the meeting. I think we had about eight or nine people there, and they were happy with the drainage, that we are going to be doing a drainage project. There's a open drain that had tree stumps and cinder blocks and everything else thrown in it over time, so we've got to figure out the permitting for one thing. It's a longer process, if it's deep, it's shorter if it's inland wetlands, but also part of it's private property, part of it's our property, so that, you know, we're checking the titles on that, you know, it's never easy. But we are going to be, hopefully by the fall, doing a clean out of that drain.
Very good. Make a motion to adjourn.
I just have one comment, Councilor Baumgartner, I think the best resiliency plan for Washington DC is called impeachment.
Moved to adjourn by Parker, was there a second on the motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second by Councilor Baumgartner. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously, we are adjourned.